With us, this is our regular scheduled meeting, August the 3rd, 2011, at 9:01. At this time, I'll move down to roll call. Commissioner Hammond, District 1. Commissioner Vickers, District 2. Commissioner Martin, District 4. Commissioner Ellis, District 5. All commissioners present. Adopting of the agenda. Do we have any omission or addition to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to, uh, remain out of number one in the public vote.
I find it new business. I would like to also put a discussion, not approve of, but a discussion regarding the proposal for engineering services under item number four. If not, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I had a number four discussion with the day last week. Yesterday, we've got other funds to use now, and we don't have to agenda that yet this time.
So that's the point of view?
No, no, no. Public works.
So just remove this from the... Okay.
And also, for a person we got, a motion for, for having sponsored new business, I think number eight.
Okay. A proclamation for revenue matters. Okay. Commissioners, do you have anything else you would like to add or leave on into the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda. Sir?
Motion made by Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner Martin. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, five oh. Okay, the kind of thing we have from petition from the public, Mr. Watts, would you like to wait until we, uh, we have it on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, bye.
Approvals of amendments from the regular held meetings June 20th, special meeting June 20th. A special meeting on July 21st, July 20th and July 21st. Do I have a motion to approve?
Do my motion, ma'am chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Vickers, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ellis. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five oh. Moving to departments report, do we have the representatives in the Sheriff Department? If not, Ms. Barfield?
The only thing we have is last Friday, we received notice from Department of Revenue that our tax toll rule was approved.
That's good.
It's preliminary, and now awaiting authority to see back from the tax authority their proposed mill is right, and your proposed mill is right.
Thank you. Appreciate that, ma'am chair. Ms. Gill. Supervising election, Ms. Williams.
If you know that it is done.
Consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner Vickers. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign. Public Works Department, approval of hire for current vacancy at Road Department.
Good morning. Good morning. Um, probably about seven twenty first, we had one employee left, uh, positioned for truck drivers, and, uh, I'd have permission to re-adapt for his position and rehire. To bring you up to date, we do have a workforce person starting past Monday with us, you know, but we still like his position. I'd like permission to advertise for his position to be hired as a truck driver for another truck driver.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Vickers to hire for current vacancy at the Road Department. Do I have a second?
Sir?
Have a second by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, five oh.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all for anything else for me.
Um, Country Club Road, when will they start doing work?
I don't know exactly what, when they gonna start. They've been notified in Maryland, they got that, and Perry Avenue started in Maryland, they got the real hope of these projects. I haven't heard anything back from the Sheriff.
Can you get with them and find out?
Yes, ma'am, I can find that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Public Works, considering the payment of travel lane and solid waste collection center with gas tax plan. Good morning.
Uh, two meetings ago, we had spoken through the possibility of seeking some relief or to use five to six cent money to pay for the paving of the collection sites, and having spoken with Mr. Sanders, I think there was some review work done. I think that they qualify as travel lanes for public use, and so that was on the items on the agenda, and I wanted to seek your approval to use those monies if they are available, and to, pardon, look at a prioritized listing of what those sites would look like, so that we get to the one that are most need first, and then proceed in that order. You're committed, and if Sanders may ask for the information, I think I will make decisions.
In your package is a definition of road that Mr. Reeves has assigned, and it's there for your review. The issue is if this, are these collection centers driving services considered a road? I think Mr. Reeves, the board establishes that they are roads, and then certainly the gas tax money can be used for them, so I conclude there's maybe two issues approved, or consider they use roads, if so, if you use the relevant dollars to, to pay. We have one that's done in Reagan's board, that's a motion of about $28,000 of the cost of, of return help. Mr. Planch, but...
We get, we get...
Yes.
The question is whether or not the, the travel lanes qualify as a road. Under the statute in Chapter 334, you've got a definition of a road, and that falls into the definition of a county road, the county road system and all that, and that's what the, the gas tax has to be spent on, is your county roads. The definition under, uh, Chapter 334 says road means the way, open to travel by the public, including but not limited to a street, highway, or alley, et cetera. So, I mean, you all know what those travel lanes are. I think they follow in that definition. Uh, that's a decision that's up to this board, if they follow the definition, usually gas tax money is to, um, to do that. Doesn't follow in that definition, it shouldn't usually.
Motion's over. I, I think this is a good idea. I think what we've got, these flexi sites have been really super good.
Yes, ma'am.
I think if we could do this, maybe, this would be not too interesting, look down the road, because we can't get all of them covered, can't, this is, I'll make a question. Gas tax money should be used for lanes, pavements, roads, and that flexi site.
Sir?
Um...
Can, can you include in that that you find that you follow in that definition?
That's how far you're going to definition of road.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion?
Yes, it's for all collection sites, just by case by case.
I think with provision, I'd like to come back with a prioritized listing on the ones that are in the worst condition, and then look at the process on moving from the worst to the ones that are the least, but also to find a, a lender source that would, uh, meet our needs, but also be competitive enough to ensure that we have the best product, you know, what we're spending, right, and get bids again, would be, would be the desire to pay. And I think that if we get a bid from a certain company, we could probably be able to get a reduced cost based upon the number that we'd be looking for, so I'd like to go with that, okay?
Yeah. I think, you know, long term, we need to travel, you know, the things that ain't bad, now it's just a matter of time, the traffic going in and out, they gonna be bad.
I agree with Commissioner Ellis. I think it's a good activity, the definition and advice of attorney, if it falls up under, this would be a good chance to take advantage of it.
Two tasks that are paid, you know, which you asked.
In fact, uh, Mr. Hammer, if you inquire, we've got three, of those thirteen, that we got that lane already paid. One fifty is big to pay, fourteen are south, but they're the first one, and of course, rate was, you know, third, and so, they are excellent appearance, and if you've seen them, I'm sure you have, they're very efficient, you know, for exploitation as well as for sale of usage, so.
Do you know off the top of your head, uh, Clark, do you know what the, the amount of money is that they're gonna have, you know? Fifty-six. About seven hundred and six thousand dollars.
We're not, we're not gonna try and pay them all this year.
That's, that's what I'm motioning, I have a...
Just to help you out, would you love to, to part that, that, with that? Motion to suspend, motion have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five oh. Thank you, Mr. Parr. Would you have a possible change of Martin's 2003-26 relating to Madison County Park? Mr. Attorney.
Um, we had, uh, discussed for the last several meetings, a possible change of, of this, the board that's dealing with parks, and specifically the changes that have been discussed for the Cherry Lake Park. I had loads of opposed changes in package from the last meeting. We all talked about it, and it was asked to be brought back, to see if anybody had any other ideas or anything else. If you want to proceed to make the, the changes that were suggested, or any other changes to make, our next step is to go ahead and advertise that, advertise it for a public hearing, at which time this board can enact an ordinance, amend that ordinance, and make those changes. It's gotta be, it's, 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 we're gonna have to bring it up one more time, to let me know what you wanted to do, and I think we thought once, you know, to talk to people and see if there was a, you know, if people in the public had any thoughts in addition to what we've talked about.
Mr. Cherry Lake?
Yes, sir. This was the, the, uh, the proposed changes were, first off, on these fishing tournaments, that if the fishing tournament was proposed to occur at night, or at any time of day, but off-season, so in winter or whenever, that the Parks Department would be able to approve that without the Department of Commerce, any commissioner, some time in the event they made that decision. If they wanted a fishing tournament during season, during the operating hours, they'd have to come back to this meeting. The other question, whether the other proposed change was concerning giving the residents at the beach, the residents of Cherry Lake, a sticker where they could go in and launch their boats, and not use the parking facilities. They would launch their boat, and drive their, their car, and the trailer back to their lot, provided for, uh, for this, for the counter to issue of the sticker. The sticker goes on the boat, it's good for one year, the charter must certainly do that, and they have to show that they both own the vessel and own a lot on Cherry Lake, and then it gave a certain, uh, number of the vessels that could be registered, and you hear, had to be done every year. But anyway, those were the, the proposed changes.
We didn't come up with an amount on the stick, did we?
I, I think what I did was, I put in there five dollars, and it could be changed by the board by resolution, but if y'all don't do resolution, five dollars, and that was being pulled in the number of the year. I have no idea what it would actually cost, so, I think that would be something you all would wanna think about, and, and also, the way I'd set it up, and we can do it any way you want to, but the way I'd set it up was, that they would pay their fee for the sticker, and that they would not be charged going in and out of the, of the boat rent. Y'all can do that any way you want. You can charge a sticker, and you can charge going in and out, or however you want.
I would want to charge a sticker, and go in and out, because my thing, you know, by this, they gonna have to pay ten dollars to get in. I mean, if you own property on the lake, and you don't have a dog, I'm sure, it's, it costs a lot of money to put one in, so you can pull the ten dollars, put your boat in, and saddle that seat to ten dollars, is what I was saying.
And, and, yeah, put the boat in and, and take the trailer back.
Take the truck back, yeah.
And you did talk about decaf, and the decaf, the five dollars was a bit low, at least twenty-five dollars for a decaf, to, you know, offset the cost set up, which would be at least twenty-five dollars, that was what I saw.
Well, and, and there would be, um, some, some staff time involved, because they have, it's not just the actual freight, the decaf.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm concerned that has changed, and if that's what we're going to do, y'all ready to advertise it around?
Twenty-five dollars per decaf?
Yeah, for a decaf, because the cost to offset...
Ten dollars. Yeah. Launch a bid.
Bunch of them drains, and you're getting way cut. At least someone wants out of the vault. This is an option.
Yeah, you gotta consider, you have to have a decaf, you gotta come up with a decaf, the cost to offset what you're trying to do with that, you know, you can't do anything really with five dollars now.
Staff, now, we always do things by, to check on the price of the...
I know, we, we got the, the decaf costs, but the other cost that we're gonna incur is having to get through the, you know, isolate all those voters that own it, that's gonna do some staff time.
Boy, at this time, do you want, I'm trying to continue with there, if you guys want to consider some changes in that, other than the changes that you just discussed? Yes, yes, yes. You all right? By the... Packet expenses, we could go in and...
And I'll advertise with this two changes, y'all just...
I appreciate that. I find a new business approval on interlocal agreement at Toynbee County and the town of Greenville for construction, rebuild, water well improvement, in conjunction with the Florida Small Cities Community Development Rock, Black, and...
You want to, Mr. Parrish, or Sting, drain water?
One thing before we leave that, I'm, I'm, okay, now, uh, one other thing we probably want to do is start that in St. January one of next year, since we're kinda halfway in this session, I don't know if we want to, right now, but we won't get staff time to come up with a, a statement on that.
What then, Mr. Parrish?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before I address this issue, on behalf of the town of Greenville, we want to thank you again for your assistance in our recent CDBG grant project for drainage improvements, and we were able to close out the project on time and within budget, and as, we were able to find some money, and so we did reimburse the county for the use of the Road Department for cleaning out the ditch, it worked very well. As a matter of fact, we've had some pretty heavy rains over there, and I've been advised the board to move right through, so the town is very appreciative of the help of the county in taking us through that entire process. What we have before you today is another CDBG grant application from the town to construct a new water well on some property that the town and Water Management District purchased in 2006 for a, for a new water well, well field, and under the application requirements, since the property is located just outside the city limits, it does require an, well between the town and the county, and the county, but county is basically saying that it has no objections to the improvements in the unincorporated area, it beats your mom plan, and it also indicates that the county has absolutely no liability in this project, it's entirely the town, but since it is in the unincorporated area, an intermodal agreement is required. So, the town, the town council approved it last night at a special meeting, I have two copies of the executed agreement, I believe from Mr. Sanders, his council, or permission approved it. Do you have to answer any questions, sir?
This will be, as far as the water well improvement, they, you know...
We have, there are two water wells in Greenville now, one of them is in bad shape, it's already had some major repairs to it, and if that goes down, the town would be in danger of basically losing the water supply of the one existing well. So we think we can install the new well with the grant, and it's very important, also, of course, unincorporated area customers to receive water from the town in the adjacent areas, sort of, but, but...
So you've just been patching it up, patching it up?
Correct. About two years ago, the casing blew out on the old well, and we had to have it replaced, and they told us then that it's just a matter of time before it goes down again, and it really wasn't worth repairing, so, it's very, from the health and safety standpoint, it's very important.
Mr. Parrish, a motion to approve of this? Sir? Motion made by Commissioner Vickers, second by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five oh.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Appreciate everything you do. Discussion and update and shift funding in the Swat, want you to run the economic council. Mr. Matt, here's a...
I'm seeing, I'm seeing.
Okay.
Mr. Parrish, I'm sure you're here as a chair.
Okay. Number three, approval request for proposal of engineering services, request for extension on current contract with our estimate through R and P procedure.
Um, Madam Chairman, on that particular one, and this was about rebid that contract, since, uh, when is that, when is it up?
I think it's the thirteenth at this point.
Thirteenth? At the last meeting, I, I had thought about this, when you said we got going on, especially with the bridge over at Montefiore, what I would like to do is maybe just extend this contract for a year, and then just look at, at that time, that all that's going on with the bridge, I would want, if somebody's did come in, I want somebody to come in and be on that particular job, so we could just extend it for another year, and then look at, that'd be my motion.
I see. We have a motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner, um, Vickers. Any other discussion? My thing was that, I did, I did pull some of the information on it, and rentals, the price wise, we're not gonna give a better price to have the services that we have, that they're doing, and as far as, in the community, as far as servicing, or the engineering firms, they are doing that, and my suggestion is that we just go ahead and extend their contract. I mean, not bid it out for an R and P or anything like that, just go ahead and extend the contract, with that in R, just, just...
Yeah, that's pretty much my motion, just rather than saying it.
It will.
Yeah.
And to look at it again in the year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay, I'll go with that. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, five oh. Number four, discussion regarding special assessment study finding, Mr. Jeff Rackley.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jeff Rackley, Government Services Group, and we have been working on both the fire and solid waste assessments, and now start with just a general overview of solid waste, and these are still somewhat preliminary numbers, but they're, they're based on last year's property data, and, and going through the entire budget for, for solid waste line item by line item, breaking out the residential portions, since this is only a residential solid waste assessment, including, uh, capital costs, and netting out the revenues that you have coming in associated with just residential portion, and then adding on the additional cost to, to collect the assessment for the tax collector, et cetera, et cetera. And it looks like your rates for solid waste are gonna come in pretty close to what they are current, uh, which I believe is, currently they're a hundred and eighty-seven dollars per residence per year. It may be a couple dollars higher, a couple dollars lower, but it's right in that general ballpark. So, so everything there, I, I think is pretty straightforward. We should have a, a full draft report, um, ready for review, uh, within the next day or two on that, but solid waste is really the world, the easy one, I think, here, so, any questions about, about solid waste, or any issues? Anyone? Okay, the, the fire assessment one is the trickier one, which we knew that film in, and there's some problems with, with the historic call data, which, which we were aware of the last time we did this, and it's been an ongoing problem, trying to get good quality fire call data, and, and it's not a, an issue that you need to, to this county, or even just a volunteer department, see even, you know, some top-notch paid fire departments we deal with, um, in other parts of the state have issues sometimes with the call data, and how clean it is, and missing parts of the data. You know, some of it depends on, on how well they're reporting it, how well it's reviewed, what type of system they're using, if they're using the, the state fire emergency system, which is tied into the national system, which is a FIFRs or NIFRs, a Florida Fire Instant Reporting System, or the National Fire Instant Reporting System. So, we have run into some issues there. What, what we've done to try to overcome that is, is get the call data from the city, and match that up with the, the bills that the city provides to the county for calls they run, and try to piece together as best we can the situation found, so, so what type of call it is when they get on the scene, so we can determine whether it's a fire or an EMS call, and then also what type of property that call went to. So, so it's been some work on that front. The thing we, we didn't wanna do is make assumptions on that call data, um, so if something was unclear, we generally push that call to the side, try to do some research on it if we could, and determine, if best we could, the, the true set of calls that we were, were sure were in the, the fire service area, the other incorporated county, and, and the, the other cities that the, the volunteer fire department served, and, and where we could definitely determine that it was a fire call and not an EMS call, and definitely determine what the property used what it meant to, so that we didn't incorrectly use those calls to allocate the cost, to, either wrongly allocate the cost to fire, or wrongly allocate the fire cost to the incorrect property to that. So, in doing that, what we've seen is a, a shift in the calls from the previous study more to the residential ones. And also, well, there's a few different things, but also there's, there's a, a slight increase in the, the overall budget, which, there's some things that, that we've been discussing with, with the county staff to, to look at, you know, all those line item costs, and if there's anything that perhaps we've overestimated there that we need to adjust, we're still working on that. Yeah, I don't know if, if everyone's seen the preliminary rates or not, and, you have seen those, okay. So, there's several different options we have. One is... One is since there are some issues with the call data, instead of just using this year's call data, average that call data with the call data from the last study to, to kind of have a smoothing effect there, um, to address some of those major changes because there are some, like I said, a big shift to residential properties. The, the other options are, of course, like I said, to, to reduce the budget some, which would lower all your rates. And then the other option is to just leave the call data how it is, um, leave the budget how it is and fund a lower percentage of your budget, which then we would have to come up with that additional money through some other other source, be it a general fund or whatever. Um, we're also going to, going to look at a few other things, um, you know, that, that may have some, some impacts on, on the land rates and how we calculate those. But, um, in, in general, I think the, there's good news and bad news depending on which kind of property you own from the county based on the preliminary rates. Your residential rate would go from, from I think $25 previously to, to $40 or $41 per year, per loan. But at the same time, your commercial, uh, industrial warehouse institutional rates and your, your land rates would go down. And, and that's really due to the shift in calls more to the residential properties versus the other properties. So we're, we're still trying to iron out some of these things and, and, and give the county a few options here, um, before you have to make that decision of where you want to set the rates. Um, and we should have, uh, uh, at, at least some additional options probably later on this afternoon dealing with land. And then it's really going to be up to the, to, to the county staff and ultimately the board as to, to how you want to address that and what, what you're comfortable with in terms of, of, of grades. And, and normally, you know, most of your taxpayers, of course, are your, your residence property. So they're, they're the ones who, who at least if, if you took the, the rates just as they are, would experience the greatest increase, um, which, which dollar wise, you know, isn't tremendous, but percentage wise is pretty increase in, you know, any increase in anything now is, is, is going to hit people, you know, and they're probably not going to be really active about that and understand what everything else is going on. So, yeah. Any questions about the, the fire assessment at this point that I can answer?
When you say the $40, like the, or possibly going with the $40, that's the maximum?
Correct. That, that would be the, the maximum assessment, which, um, I believe coming up on, uh, the 10th, is that when the preliminary resolution is scheduled for is? That, that is when, when you set your preliminary rates, which is the rates that would be noticed. And when I say notice, an, an individual mail notice will be sent, first class mail to all affected property owners and a public notice will go in the newspaper as well. And it's just like your mileage rate, you have the option of setting that rate higher and then, you know, at, at final public hearing, um, in September, I think it's September 7th or somewhere around, I don't know the exact date, you can always reduce those rates.
What, what is necessary to generate the budget that we've got now? Is that $41?
To generate the, well, to, to generate the net budget you have now, it would be close to the $40 residential. Um, because you have some, some buy downs in there for your government and institutional taxes and properties, which you don't necessarily have to exempt those properties. Um, but you always have in the past and I'm assuming it's something you continue to do. I mean, government properties, you don't really have a mechanism to collect from them anyways. So, you know, unless you come to some agreement with, with each individual property owner, whether it be in DOT or the cities or water management district, whoever it is, you know, they're likely not going to pay the assessment anyway. You just can't put a lien on their property and there's nothing you can do to collect it. The institutional taxes and properties, you can legally charge them, you know, however, that, that's another issue altogether in that they do provide, you know, this is your churches and, and your, your nonprofit type properties or boys and girls clubs or anything like that, you know, they provide services that if, if they weren't there, the county may have to in turn provide some of those services. So that's kind of the general concept behind exempting them is that they provide services to, to the citizens that the county would otherwise have to provide. So, you know, like I said, you, you could charge their properties. Most, I'd say 99% of the clients we deal with don't charge.
I, I thought we did charge fire assessment on churches. Yeah. We, we have charged fire assessment because remember our solid waste is only a residential site, we wouldn't get one of those anyway, but the fire assessment, I thought we had charged on churches.
I, I don't think you charge, well, I think you charge, and I can check on this, the, the, some church owned properties, but the actual...
Sanctuary.
Church sanctuary or the actual, um, well, let's talk about the church. A church property may have a sanctuary and then maybe it has a, a parsonage, a parsonage or residential house on that same parcel. You would charge that residential property, you wouldn't charge the, the actual sanctuary, which, um, and, and the same for the other nonprofit. If, if, if they're operating a commercial business like a, a thrift store, even though it's owned by a nonprofit entity, it's a commercial business, so it would generally be charged. Whereas a, um, if, if a nonprofit organization maybe was running something like, like a shelter or something like that, they, they probably wouldn't be charged.
If I make a suggestion, while, while we just see how we did it last time and have the rolls appeared in that same way, um, I, I thought we were charging churches. I, because I remember the discussion specifically, I don't remember which one came out, but we're not charging them.
No, I, I'm...
I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure. You're, you're not actually charging the church sanctuary. You, you are charging if there's any other property use besides institutional, which is what it happened to be institutional tax exempt. If any other building used on that parcel, you would be charged, but the sanctuary you wouldn't. But overall, I think we're only with institutional tax exempt, um, I think we're talking about less than, less than $20,000 total there. The bulk of the buy down is, is really the government property. And it's because of the, the large governmental lane, actually.
But that's the decision I'm going to have to make is if you want to generate the same budget we have, you've got to levy at a certain rate and the, and when I say that call volume shift to that more for residential, that's, so if you, if you stay the way they're, they've got it set up now in the portion to generate the same budget you had last year, you're going to have to go up on your residential assessment. And so that's the, that's the issue that this board's going to have to face, is whether or not you want to do that. Obviously you don't have to, obviously you can generate a decent budget out of special assessment base out of your, add form tax, you can, you know, you've got options there.
Yeah, and just to clarify on, on one option that I mentioned, if you, if you take the, the call volume this time that we looked at, which was for a calendar year, with the call volume, um, in, in the breakdown from the last study and average those two together, um, your, your residential rate actually comes down a little bit to, to $34. Um, and that you would generate, um, just under $300,000, um, which I think is, is close to, to what your net, um, revenue generation was last time. So that's, that's one approach to think about. The, the flip side of that is when you average those numbers, your, your land rates do go up, um, from what they were previous. So I, I will get all these various scenarios, um, to, to the county manager and, and, so you, so you'll be able to make an informed decision and review all this stuff prior to that meeting on, on the 10th.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions or...
Going back to the, uh, what you're talking about on, on the, uh, call, uh, we, don't we have a standardized call reporting system for county level?
Well, the short answer I think would be no.
And, and I think that's what, that's what we're trying to work on, to get everybody on to whether to get on the NIFRs and the FORD. And that's some of the issues. That's some of the issues that we're still trying to face.
I know we probably got a big distraction between, between fire calls and EMS calls and, 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 uh...
Yeah, and, and, and the, the, you know, the, the study's only as good as the fire call data you, you had to base it on. And, you know, we, we tried to get the information directly from the, the volunteer departments going through the county staff to get that and, and I don't want to knock them, I mean, they are volunteers and...
They're private church.
But, but, you know, you, you may want to think about some way to, to better enforce that collection of, of call data. However you have to do that, I believe you have a, a fire board, um...
Trying to agree with that.
And, and, and I don't know if, if, this is just, uh, something we've seen elsewhere is that they actually tie the funding of those fire departments to the number of calls they're running. Uh, now I'm not recommending you do that, that's, that's definitely a decision and discussion for another day. But, but, um, you know, at, at least, you know, standardize that process across all those volunteer departments. And, and, and I think the county staff knows of the certain critical pieces of information, at least that, that we would need to do a fire assessment, stuff I'm sure the state fire marshal's office would like to see as well, and, and stuff that would also probably help you moving forward, you know, especially a, a, as far as resources and, and if you're making decisions on where do we need a new truck or an additional truck or, you know, maybe somewhere down the road wanting to move to a, to a paid professional staff fire department, where do we start that and how, how do we start that process? I think that information would be critical. So I, I do think it's something that you need to do, um, you know, understanding that with, with volunteer departments, it's, it's hard, it's hard to do, you know? And, and like I said, you're not unique in that aspect. I mean, that's always a challenge we have with, with call data.
One other thing too that would help with this report, I mean, would be grants. I mean, if they had this information, by all means, I don't want to be the dead horse to death, but I mean, I've been thinking that we may need to move in a direction, maybe with a coordinator, somebody that could oversee this and make sure that all is happening right now, you know, they're going to see that we don't have that.
Yeah.
You know, it would be so much easier, like when you came over me and I emailed you that this with all the information on it and you just had, had whatever you needed. We don't have it in this county and it's, it's a problem.
Yeah.
It's a big problem, you know? I feel like it's almost useless to have this study done on the fire because, you know, you, you can't collect the information. I mean, it's like we're just really wasting money, you know? But, but it's got to be done...
Yeah.
...to do, to do the fire assessment.
Yeah, we could definitely, I, I think, do a, do a better job if we could really capture all those calls and, and know for certain what they are and where they're going. And, and also a big thing is knowing when you got a false alarm call and being able to pull those out. And, and we, we tried to go through the, the sheriff's department for dispatch and we went through city and we looked at the volunteer stuff and we looked at the billing and tried to piece all that together as best we could. And, uh, uh, understanding the, the call data is never going to be perfect, but, um, I, I, I think it, I think it could, could get, could get a lot better with, with at least a, a little bit of effort, but I know that's going to be a challenge. But that is a recommendation I, I would make moving forward that I think would help you with not only the fire assessment, but also obtaining grant funds, you know, being able to show of an...
You know, by all means, volunteers that do a good job in this county, I'm sure they do a good job in other counties, but you know, that would be one way, it really would benefit them, it would benefit them, you know what I'm saying? I realize all of the work and they probably come back from the fire and they don't want to take out another few minutes to do a report and I understand all that, but still, at the end of the day, it's still a problem.
Yeah.
Saying we don't ever address it and they don't ever get addressed. Five years or six years when you come back and do another study, well, that same problem will be right here. Yeah. I might not be able to...
Somebody will be able to. Hopefully, you know, you, you can make some changes there and, and if we, we need to, we can help, you know, just, just pass on the information, at least at bare minimum, here's, here's the information that would, would help us for this fire assessment study. At the bare minimum, if you could just fill these four or five fields out on the report, you know, it would go a long, long ways and we can help, help with that. Any other questions on that?
Did I understand that there's going to be a mailing soon?
There will be a, a mailing on, on both the fire assessment and solid waste, um, and, and where possible, if it's a same property, they'll be sent together to say on mailing costs and all that. But yes, there will be a, a mailing showing, uh, for each affected property, the, the, property category, type and number of units and the, the total assessment for each property.
Preliminary rates?
Yes, based on the preliminary...
When is that? Well...
I think that's going to go out, um, August 17th or 18th, somewhere in there, some, somewhere around that third week in August, I believe.
Our office always gets a lot of questions when those go out, so it just needs an opening.
And it, and it'll also list the, the date and time for that final public hearing, all the other information that statutorily required as far as the ADA requirements and, uh, it'll have a phone number for questions and issues and, you know, talk about the correction process and what happens if you don't pay your assessment and all that. It'll be on there.
If I could just let the board know, that'll be about two days before the proposed notices go out. They go out on the 19th, which is on a Friday.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that exact day, I would guess somewhere in there, I don't have the schedule.
If you could let Alan know so that we would be...
He, he has the schedule. He has the schedule in the schedule office. And it may be that Monday when they're going out. I'm not, if you pause it, but somewhere right in that time. Anything else?
We appreciate it, and you gave us a lot of good information to work with and some things that we as a board need to work on ourselves, you know? And again, we appreciate everything.
I appreciate your time, and I will get you some more information so that you can make the most informed decision possible, and I appreciate it.
Chairman, Matt Pearson.
Okay. I'm going to move to number five instead of Matt Pearson. I'm going to put you after this. We consider our commitment to the President and Alcoa agreement between the county, the city of Madison, the town of Lee, the town of Greenville to allow portion of received a small county surtax to be intended to enter into care within the county.
Madam Chairman, I had a meeting that was held with staff and the county staff and staff of the cities. One of the concerns that was expressed was the interlocal agreement agreed by the county did not specifically say that it did not change our present operating agreements with the municipalities concerning who operates what with respect to the issue. I would have said we had to have that, but that was a concern. So on page six of the one that was in your packet, I added a new paragraph six that says this interlocal agreement shall not be deemed to affect the previous agreements between the parties dealing with the ownership and operation of water and wastewater systems being used to provide water and wastewater services to the interchanges. Of course, interchanges is defined in the agreement. Including without limitation, that certain interlocal agreement dated July seventh to May tenth, recorded in public records, Madison County Florida, our book nine-nine-five, page ten. So that's just in there to say that this doesn't change, you know, who operates what and with respect to the water and wastewater systems. We're trying to kind of give as much notice as quickly as possible. That's why I've had requested provision placed back from the agenda. I think we can have that provision in or not. What I would recommend is, if the board would go ahead and not pass this, but make it kind of an either or, where you say that if the cities all want that provision in there, the chair, the clerk authorized to execute the one with this provision. If the cities don't want it in there, you're authorized to sign the other one, and we keep going forward.
What happens when you have one that won't sit in there?
Yeah, but you've got to bring it back, and everybody's got to figure out a little Everybody's got to. All four boards have to approve the exacting documents.
So wouldn't they, one board decide that they're not, they don't want it?
Yeah, for instance, if Lee said they didn't want it this way, but Madison said they did, then we've got to negotiate that out.
I can't about how the body could, sorry, negotiate, particularly some sewer reports already there, and the agreement is that, you know, we will pay for it until it's paid for, then they will take the next.
Yeah, and actually, this is the...
Take it over completely.
And we already had it here, you know, we've already got it here, that we're paying the debt that was incurred to set those systems. That was already in there. The point here was who's operating, the city of Madison. The previous interlocal agreement said the city of Madison is operating once, the one building fifty-three, up to a certain point between fifty-three and the one in Leeds, the town of Leeds operating once at that exit, up to a certain point, twenty-five, the town of Greenville is operating at that exit. And, you know, like I said, it was just something that was brought up, seemed like it didn't hurt anything to add a specific provision saying that, give a little bit of comfort and go on.
I have a motion to approve the general approval of this...
We have a motion by Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner Hammond. Any other discussion? Our favor signified by I. I'll oppose, same sign, bye go. Okay, Mr. Watch, can you come up, please?
This is placed under agenda, the proclamation for Reverend Evans. Right, the like to speak as a citizen, as opposed to county employee, our Jerome White, two oh four, West County East Avenue, Madison, four zero three two three four oh. The members of Mount Zion will be recognizing Charles W. Evans for eleven contentious years of service at Mount Zion Baptist Church on the thirteenth and fourteenth of August. Our two separate churches will be performing those recognitions on his Saturday, six in Indiana, two thirty on the fourteenth. So the members will put together a program that we think that he is deserving of for that. What we understand, he has been the longest-decedent pastor at the church since its eighty-seven year history. So we're very proud of that. And what we'd like to do, with your concurrence approval, is to ask your consideration to proclaim August fourteenth as Charles W. Evans' Day through proclamation. If that be in order, that will be our request.
The proclamation, do you have...
Proclamation, Charles W. Evans' Day, Mount Zion African Methodist Church, Madison, Florida. Whereas Charles W. Evans was born in Mount St. Louis, Jefferson County, Florida, on June ten, nineteen fifty-three. Whereas he entered the United States Air Force in November nineteen seventy-one, and completed a four-year tour of duty, ended his commitment in November nineteen seventy-five. Whereas Charles W. Evans was married to the former Archie Taylor, a native of St. Petersburg, Florida, and together they were blessed with six children. We're saying here, Charles Evans, David, Jasmine, William, Victor, and were blessed with three grandchildren. Whereas, whereas Charles W. Evans entered the School of Pharmacology at Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University in nineteen seventy-five, and completed his formal education, was certified and licensed as a pharmacist in nineteen eighty-five. Whereas Charles W. Evans entered and completed formal training for clergy ordination from nineteen seventy-eight through nineteen eighty-three, and was ordained in October nineteen eighty-three in the Catholic Orthodox Church. Whereas Charles W. Evans has been a pastor of Mount Disco, African Methodist Episcopal Church in Grandville, Florida, Spring Hill Fountain Circuit, Trawfordville, Florida, Ford Chapel, African Methodist Episcopal Church, Middletown, Florida, and Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church of Madison, Florida, from nineteen ninety-nine to the present, being the longest-decedent pastor ever at Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church of Madison. Whereas Charles W. Evans has been a pillar in the Madison County communities, contributing to the well-being of citizens, as he was performed as professional leaders in the stedpass in flawless manner, as a pharmacist, dispensing medicines, providing expert advice and maintenance of Indian medical health. Whereas Charles W. Evans has preached the gospel to the hopeful, to those that may be categorized as hopeless in an effort to change their lives, but with the understanding that God is always in control. And whereas the heart of his life, even from an early age, had recognized that God had planned for him, and been loyal to the word of God, and has done his very best to carry out his obligations and commitments, Charles W. Evans is worthy of having a day named in his honor as a token appreciation for his contributions to the citizens of Madison County. Now, therefore, be it all, dissolved by Madison County Board of County Commissioners on Sunday, August the fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, is for Charles W. Evans' Day.
We have a motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Vickers. Any other discussion? Our favor signified by I. I'll oppose, same sign, bye go. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Discussion update on ship funding and twenty-year economic counseling.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry for my delay. How are you guys doing this morning? I brought some information. I'm sure you guys asked some questions. We've got good news. I know Diane combined brought some information. The ship program is back after a couple of years of absence. That's excellent news. I'm here to answer any questions that you have on the major change in the new program. Yes, no new constructions will be allowed on the program. As a state-owned initiative, there's so many empty houses throughout the state, trying to get some of that housing stock off the market before the state started investing in new construction again. That's one of the steps. I don't think it's that big a problem here in Madison County, as there's some parts of the state with empty houses and some of those programs. Houses, Madison County is my local sample, which is every, all six of South County. So we're back up and go on with the ship program. I'd be happy to answer some questions. I brought some information about the rehab programs. I believe that's the reason you guys want me to come down and answer some questions. I brought an update in this year. Do you guys want to take it?
And I think, Matt, the last time you was here talking, Matt, you made stop the program. You said when y'all stopped, Matt, you pick up, y'all gonna pick up from where you started from?
That's correct. Well, let me kind of give you an update as to what's happened in the past couple of years. State of Florida ship program went to what's called the Florida Home Buyer Opportunity Program, where basically the Madison County received three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we could only spend that money in what they call the FIP program, where essentially we'd help someone buy a house, give them eight thousand dollars, or a max of eight thousand dollars. They had to repay that money with the proceeds of a federal tax program they received. So they buy a house, the federal government give them eight thousand on tax credit, they were in charge at that point to repay the money. It was not a successful program anywhere. So that money kind of sat dormant for over a year, and then at that point, the state department went back to the old ship rules. When that occurred, we went back to this old rehab list for names that had been on there since two thousand and three. We started picking them off based on application date, making contact with those clients. We have since made our way through that list, you know, based on rehabbing those houses and/or people being over income. Unfortunately, a couple had deceased, a couple have moved, but we've made it through this list now. We finished it up this summer.
A couple of other things. One of the main things, I always like to see that a contractor from Madison County, you know, doing the work, and I also like, in fact, you could maybe buy the materials from Madison County, since that money was coming to Madison County, and you keep it in Madison County.
Well, what we did, the last time I was here, you mentioned that, all the ship money has been spent using Madison County contractors. We would need to write it in our contract, however, if we was going to require materials to be bought locally, that may be a little, it's a little tricky for us to do that. We've got to kind of give us a legal opinion of how we require that to be done. I'm not sure if you can even buy all the materials here in Madison County that's required.
I would like, you know, if you need to get a legal opinion, a legal opinion, I definitely would like that a little bit, because I think it need to be, the materials need to be from Madison County, and the contract need to be from Madison County.
I agree. The state of Florida, I know you guys following the governor's recommendations, there's a big push to make sure every opportunity is bid out. I think that some workforce development boards have some issues kind of going right now. The ship program historically has not required us to bid these jobs out. We go out and do a work write-up on it, and then we could essentially hire the contractor to go out and do the works, therefore, we could control that contractor, and who it's going to be. So if we were to move into a bid process, we might also, I don't know if Madison County has anything in place for local contractors, receive some kind of percentage, like five or ten percent. So we might just kind of cover the whole thing, and then that contract give them some kind of advantage to give them a help to be in Madison County, and also require them to buy as many materials as possible locally. I think that'd be a great idea. I can't see any reason why that can't be done, as anybody will help with the wording in our contract.
That would be a boost to Madison County, like students are back with jobs and, you know, having someone to purchase the material. And like you said, we know that we can't get it off, and we could at least make it a problem. That'd be to, you know, prioritize.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
So you would need to get a council?
I will. I'll contact Mr. Sanders and you guys, and then we can work on the contracts. If we do go to a bid process, which that's not been determined yet, if we were to move in that direction to bid out, the repairs should give local guys a little bit of an advantage. I think that'd be fantastic.
And then another thing, I know what y'all have been doing in the past, when y'all finish up, y'all gonna send us a list of, you know, what you done. What I would also like to see on that, if, you know, if somebody from Madison done it, just have Madison contract to buy that, buy that particular job.
We can add the name of the contractor.
Okay.
And July fifteenth, I believe, Madison County received three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that coming. So that money is in the, we have not sort of taken applications yet, that old list we had, we had names on there from two thousand and three, running up to two thousand and seven. We went through that list as thoroughly, we tried our best to find everybody we could on that list. So our current plan says we'll serve people on a first come, first served basis. Some other counties have instituted sort of a points priority list based on serving, like for example, if you're elderly, you receive a certain amount of points. If you're disabled, a certain amount of points, if you're below a certain income level. This was done on a first come, first served basis strictly because of that old list that had been hanging around for so many years. So the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee that you guys have in place, we'll be meeting in the next few weeks to discuss our annual reports. So maybe if the board would like for us to look at it, maybe a good idea to bring back a recommendation to go to a points priority as compared to a first come, first served. But it's, the board of you guys, you guys set up your own local housing assistance plan, so whatever's in that plan, we'll follow your rules and regulations. So maybe something you guys want to consider doing, since that old list is gone, we make it, put together a bunch of applicants, score those applicants based on some kind of points list, and then know who we're going to serve based on that. Just something to consider.
When are you going to start taking applications?
We're taking them right now. Our focus, our agency right now in Madison County is our weatherization program. We've done about two hundred and fifty houses in the last eighteen months, weatherized. This is all home repairs, it's one different type of repairs, but we've done that over here. That stimulus money for us expires in February two thousand and twelve, so we're kind of under pressure from the state and the government to get that money expended as quickly as we can. Almost all of that work has been done multiple times here in Madison County. We're required to bid those out. We can't put any kind of preference, because this is federal money. But Madison County, it's just hard to beat local guys working in their hometown, because it's much cheaper to do it.
Murder still be happening. She's the application, I think you pick up application from around there?
It certainly can.
Will she have help there, because you signed up now with the words out about that? I would like, you know, will they send someone over to give her assistance?
We can do that. What we probably need to do, the ship program is a little different type of formally, so what we were probably need to do is basically just put together a list of anybody who is seeking assistance in that program, and then we'll bring someone in to call those clients in, and we have to verify income differently. The ship program, the weatherization program, essentially, we just base the income based on the prior year. So whatever they earned in the past year, that's what income we have to count to prove in the history. The ship program requires us to do a projection for the upcoming year. So it's a little bit different of an income verification process. So with you guys permission, I will just, or we'll just take names, all numbers and addresses, and then we'll start gathering information, and then the board probably needs to consider, do you guys want us to do a first come, first served basis, like we've been doing, or if you guys want to put together a points priority list to make sure we serve the clients that have sort of higher need.
This three hundred and fifty thousand, kind of give me an overview of how that money will be spent, like just on the ship program itself?
It will. Well, three hundred and fifty thousand, ten percent of that is administration money. It's split between us, our agency and the county. So that leaves us three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that we can spend helping residents of Madison County. The state of Florida requires us by a rule to spend at least thirty percent of that money on the very low income families, and that's fifty percent of the government budget level. So for a family of one, it's somewhere in the range of thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars. So it has to be, of course, the numbers go up income-wise, as you have for in your house. So thirty percent on very low, thirty percent, an additional thirty percent has to spend on low income families. It's a little side rule, if you spend, say, forty percent on very low, then you can do twenty on the low income. So a combin- do 20 on the low income. So, a combination of very low and low has to be at least 60% of the money spent on that. The additional one is between our moderate income families and then the final, it's 30% and the final 10% add. So, essentially, when you start breaking it down, it's $105,000 per income category. The moderate families are those usually use the money for down payment assistance to buy a house. And the down payment assistance in the current plan is $15,000. That's how much we can help them with down payment assistance. So, we can help get roughly five families or six families, I guess I believe, on, on purchase of a house. Low and the very low money usually is spent on repairs. It's kind of difficult for those very low income families, even though the county has a good plan in place to provide $25,000 of down payment assistance. It's, it's hard for those very low income families to afford a mortgage and all of those things. So, that's what we're breaking out of the current plan you guys have in place.
Thank you.
Time to have a good chat. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
So, when we come back with the, you guys will need to approve the affordable housing recommendation on, on the annual reports. We may send two recommendations to you guys. One is the first come, first served, or one is a points priority list. So, we can do it all at one time. And, and you guys, in the meantime, have any suggestions on how you want to score your applicants? I, I know Jeannie is, is on the committee. Or you guys can call me and we'll add some of those points in there, what you guys think would be a fair, you know, way to do it. So, one more thing, I, I'll let you go. My daughter played in a softball tournament out here a few months ago in the recreation department. I know you guys get complaints all the time with all guys. I'll give you a compliment. It's well done. There's a bunch of kids running around here buying gas and buying lunch. So, I, I don't know what kind of budget stuff you guys put into the recreation department, but the tournament we were at was Bill Oram and, and some of those were really, really good. Just a compliment. You guys, you have it all the time. So, have a...
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Pretty much done. Okay. So, only other thing I can see on number six is, if it's okay with the board, can we change that 1:30 preparation of the budget to 1:00 instead of 1:30? Do you guys have any problem with that? You guys?
She said, "If I mess you, you gone." I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, from 1:30 to 1:00. You guys got that?
All right.
At this time, motion to adjourn.